Yeah, we still need to have a voice. Are you ready to start? I work hard to, because this new software we're using, it makes you do the hearings and then the discussions, so that really can't bore your actions. It's just, it's out for the hearings.
Do all the hearings first and then go in?
Yeah, so, anyway, take it how you want to. I was doing what I could with what I had on that one. Okay, I started that.
Okay. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Planning Commission for January 23rd, 2019. Let's see the hutch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as far as we'll call goes, we're all here. Okay, so, what we have on the agenda today is we have, basically, zone change hearings. And, so, we will have the hearings for all of the parcels first, and then we will go and have our discussion and recommended action on all of them after we've had all the hearings. With, with zone change hearings, our focus needs to kind of be on what zone they're wanting to change it to, and does that fit in with our town plan that we have right now? So, anyway, so, I'd like to move that we open the public hearing for the zone change from open space transition and OSC to single family, half acre for portion of parcel AV-1327, less southwest one-fourth, northwest one-fourth, section 287, T-42SR-11W and W-half southwest half, section T-42SR-11W containing 320 acres. All right, so, from open space transition to half acre. And that's, that's all of, anyway, that, we'll open the hearing for that.
A second.
Okay, vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
But it should be section 28.
The legal is all, all garbage.
The less than 17 would be section 28.
If it matters.
If it matters, we should just make that correction.
Okay, so no 7 there?
No.
That was just a typo, okay.
And that agrees with, with that sesh, okay.
There, also, there's another problem. There's no such thing as a southwest one-half of section T. That's...
All you guys have to do is just say what the correction is.
Well, I don't know, I can't rebind.
So you don't have, so it's not correct on the map? Is that what you're saying?
Um, I have no idea. I haven't looked at it that well.
Well, that's what the application says. The application has the southwest half section.
Why don't we use the parcel ID of 320 acres of AV-1327?
Well, we don't know what 320 acres, so, the parcels...
And just, just use the parcel number if you're not...
Well, we know what he's doing is 1327 minus the cabin project we approved, and I think it's supposed to be northwest, not the northwest section of the northwest, you know, quarter of the northwest is the difference on it. It'd probably attack one or two parts.
No, it's on the application.
That's what they put on the application.
Yeah.
So, we'll have to, what I would do is I would just restate it with the parcel number, and then I would say minus the section that is already zoned for the cabins.
But that doesn't, that leaves all of the 440 acres, and that doesn't...
No, it doesn't.
No, just for the AV-1327, though.
If you take 40 acres away from 480, how do you get 320?
Where does it say?
The, the cabin project is on a different parcel of land, forest.
Right, it is now.
Yes, it always has been.
No.
Okay, so, where's your 480?
The AV-1327 used to be 480 acres.
Okay.
Right now, the county has it as 440 acres, because 40 acres were split off without approval. Then they say...
Without approval?
I'm sorry?
Without approval?
Correct.
When?
Um, November 30th.
But that section, we already did the zone change for, so we're basically talking, yeah. We're basically talking about the remaining property...
We're talking about this.
...of 1327 to turn that into half acre, right?
Yes.
Is that...
No, we're not. We're talking about, they, they, they're, somehow it got to be 320 acres, right there on the application.
Yes, I see where it says 320.
So, they are trying to subtract some from the 440 acres, but what they've given us doesn't work. So, we're not real clear what 320 acres we're trying to zone.
So, there, if you look at the map, this map, is that what you're looking at? There's the highlighted portion that says residential SF 0.5. And it says remaining 400 acres of the parcel, but then it says containing 320 acres.
Right.
So, it's probably...
Southwest quarter.
So, we probably just need to take that 320 acres off, because on here it does say the remaining 400 acres.
So...
This is already gone. It's already been, yeah, no matter what. But, would this be the piece that we're...
What, what 40 acres is coming off of the 440 acres?
That would be the purple.
Down here in the bottom corner.
Okay, well, that's not what...
So, the purple would be, I think, that description on that, that, you know, he was hoping for commercial one day on that, and so he's pulled that off for not having houses, and so he's, he's X-ing that part out with that description.
No, he's not. No, that description, description is not. That, well, for one thing, the description is, there is no such thing as the southwest half. If you think about that for a while, if you've got a parcel, and you have half of a parcel, it's either the south, or the west, or the east, or the north, am I right? We didn't know.
They're different parcel numbers also. They're 1, 3, A and B.
You, you can't have a southwest one-half of a parcel, if you think about it. If you've got a southwest quarter, you could do that, but you can't do a southwest half.
It says southwest quarter.
It says southwest quarter. Where does it say southwest?
Well, the first thing, it says a southwest quarter, and then later on, it says...
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the, the one that says section T over here.
Which section?
There is no section T either, no such thing. So, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we don't know what we're doing, but if everybody else is okay, I guess we...
No, I think we need to know what we're doing.
Well, I, I think we know what we're doing, but we need to know the, the proper terminology.
Have him ask specific questions to the owner.
If Travis is here, we can pretend he's not here, or we can ask him to...
Please, please, verify it.
Well, it, it says 320 acres, but I, I am seriously confused as to which 320 acres and I, I guess I'd like to know. We can work out the logistics later, I guess.
This thing here, right here. This is what the confusion is right here.
Okay.
So, let's take that out of it and let's throw it up your mind.
So, that, you're taking out the 120 acres away from the 440 leaves the 320.
And where is that? Can you...
Show, show Blake there and...
Just to draw the line across here, right?
So, so those are not being rezoned for...
Take this, yeah, just take this out of it right here and solve the problem.
Okay, so what are those being, what are those remaining as what, as what they are?
They're remaining as what they are now.
Which is...
Well, it's testing though.
It is, yeah. Okay, so, do we need to redo the opening bit?
Well, I don't know how you do it, because we, we have, we'll need to, well, I don't know how you do that. Takes time to redo the legal description, but...
Well, we have...
I would just say according to what is shown on it.
Yeah.
Well, are, are these parcels not, I mean, are they included legally under 1327?
They are.
So, we can't zone part of it?
We didn't.
If we say 1327 is zoned...
Well, and that's why it says less...
Less this and less that.
Yeah, so...
But we didn't...
1327 minus those bits.
We didn't, less the right thing.
Do we have a legal description of those areas?
That's what that is.
If you took...
Southwest quarter, is that, is that a legal description? Shouldn't there be boundaries and GPS coordinates and...
No.
It's called a meets and bounds. That's how we did the cabin project. We said the northwest quarter of the northwest section of this, this meridian line and all that.
And that's legal?
Yeah. And that's what we did on the cabin, that's what we did also on the...
Here's what you could do.
On the park, we did it the same way based on meets and bounds.
That's what they take when they go to the county to have it, what they're going to take.
I wonder if you could just say, less the west one-fourth of AV-1327. Hmm, I bet you could.
But wouldn't that include some of those too?
No, this, this is the west.
Yeah.
This would be the west fourth here, you see what it's in? Here's, here's half, where one over half is.
This would have a full section there, so I don't know.
Well, this, this whole thing is...
Yeah, we can see what...
So, you see how this would be the west half?
Okay. What these are labeled down here. It's super small, but I can't see what...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this would be, be the west four of that section.
If this is what they're labeled here, and this is what they're labeled on the application, then...
Well, you might keep in mind that the engineer that he works with is the one that gave us the description, and at some point we've got to trust that that guy knows how to do meets and bounds.
There is no, no such thing as a section T, and as Wynne pointed out, there's no such thing as a section 287. So, I don't know where it got garbled, but...
Well, the, the difference is, is that 287 wasn't on the application. That was just a typo on the agenda.
They're on section 28, correct?
Of course, the T stands for township.
Yes.
So, in the meets and bounds, they make references to the township.
Okay, so then it didn't say which section.
Why don't we identify it as 320 acres of AV-1327?
And just be done with it?
Yes, please.
Um, Will? Whatever.
I think if this is how the engineer filled it out, and this is what they intend...
I don't think the engineer filled out the application. He might have, I don't know. If he did, he should know better than to put southwest one-half on there, because that is just alien. There is no such thing. You can't have a southwest one-half.
This is the one that you're using, is this one right here?
Mm-hmm.
So, if it's, so you're looking at, I'm not seeing the southwest one-half on there.
Oh, no, no, it's on the application, sorry.
Oh, okay. So, I think what everyone is trying to say is if we use what is on the map that the engineer gave us.
Right.
And that can...
With Travis's line drawn through it.
And it should say the west half of the southwest quarter, I believe.
Okay, so...
But that, that doesn't include that.
No, but we've got the other less than accepting for that one.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Would it make sense to have Travis just draw the line through there and initial it, and then enter that into our records, just to, would that be...
I'll do it.
That'd be fine.
I think that's a good idea.
And that way...
So, it's official.
Yeah, let's keep it all in writing.
It's official by the owner.
Yeah, I see what you're saying about section T, but there should have been some, some number after the section. Actually, on the application, there was no section, so I don't, yes, there is.
Yes.
A little, little confusing.
They just...
But yeah, that would work, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would.
Travis, would you mind, you can take mine, just, just draw, draw the line there and initial it, give it to Michelle, and she can put it in with the original application, and then we've got...
Okay.
Then we've got it covered.
It's just best to have everything in writing.
Okay, so are we needing to reopen the hearing with the proper verbiage? Okay, Forrest?
Hold on a minute, I'm, I'm still thinking here. I, I do have a question before we open the meeting. We, uh, we've got, uh...
Thank you, Travis.
The drawing, I, I guess, is the whole, the whole thing is for redstone?
Yes.
Yes.
Why are we splitting it into two...
The red is going to be the half acre lots, the blue is going to be the, uh...
One acre.
One acre.
One acre and above for horseing. And then they showed their two sides for, and now it'll be like our last meeting.
So, another question that comes to my mind is where are we at with the turn lanes coming off of Main Street?
It's so small.
If we rezone this...
Do we want an opening reading?
Well, we need to figure out how to say this properly, evidently, so...
Well, the, uh, the answer is question of your mind. There's still a public hearing, right?
We have it.
No, we have no...
Oh, was that you voted, Bill?
No, we kind of...
Could we say north, north of the boundary indicated by Travis on the article introduced into the application?
It'd be east, east of them.
Well, according to the, to that, it would be north.
Oh, no.
Unless I can't see it, I guess.
Uh, no, it says east.
Yeah, yeah, because north is on this one.
Oh, yeah, I just couldn't see them, it's so small.
Okay. Can I move?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we open the public hearing for zone change from OST, OSC to single family, .05 for a portion of...
Point of...
Pardon?
Just .5.
.5 for a portion of parcel AV-1327, less the southwest quarter, northwest quarter of section 28, township 42 South, range 11 West, and less the west half of the southwest quarter of section 28, township 42 South, range 11 West, containing 320 acres.
I second.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, Wynne.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at this little red section here, minus the two little bits at the bottom. Okay, according to our, um, town...
Three little bits, well, two little bits.
Yeah. According to our town plan, our general plan, this area is already zoned, half acre. So, that's kind of what...
It's not, not zoned half acre, it's planned half acre.
Planned, yes.
Medium density, I think.
Yeah, medium density, and we've kind of decided that that's half acre. So, it fits with the projected plan. Did anyone have any...
Uh, yeah, I'd like to address, um, the question that Blake asked.
That Blake asked, which is about turn lanes, and we, we have a lot of work to do
before he can, you know, begin doing this, and the zone change just gives him, so to speak or not, to go ahead and start spending money on the engineering, the construction drawings, all of which have to be approved, and part of that would be turn lanes or traffic studies, that kind of issues that we have. And, um, he won't be allowed to move forward unless he's participated in turn lanes, and we can see a way forward on that.
Does that, and this is, I know this is not pertaining to this hearing right now, but just as an aside, does that also include what's happening up on Gooseberry as well?
It includes the cabin project and includes Gooseberry. And the, um, the, um, redirect down there, you know, I've been in contact with the county and state, and we're trying to work towards that realignment of Main Street and 49. If anybody's driven by there, you'll see some dirt moving down there, because the owner of one of those lots has taken upon himself to take care of his side of the road on the other side on that realignment. He's planning on actually moving that road himself to fix that alignment where he wants to have it. And I was telling the county about it, and they, they're supposed to come out next week and meet with me and take a look at that, so they can fly it with a drone and figure out on drawings and get some easements in place, and so we're kind of moving forward with that as well, and, uh...
Who, who's doing this?
The county.
No...
Which part?
But you, you said an owner was...
Yeah, whoever's on that right side of the road, he's just, he's out there moving dirt right now.
Does he need a permit for that?
I'm like, what the heck are you doing? And he says, well, it's my property, I can put a road here if I want. And that's what his plan is eventually, is to literally move that cattle guard and just make that road go through his property at a different angle, so it's a 90 degree angle close to it.
But you didn't have to have a permit to do excavation.
Well, he's, he's on his own land to do that right now, and he's tearing down weeds and he's, but yeah, we don't have a...
Isn't he 500 acres or something like that?
So, anyway, I told, I wasn't all fair with that, that we really should do some engineering and a few things like that, but he's out there. That's how zealous he is, he wants to get it done, and so he'll be willing to sign off on whatever the county gives us on easements and so forth, which will make it a little bit easier, having that kind of cooperation, that's why I bring it up. I don't think we can actually move that road without somebody's blessing and, you know, signing off on that, but I thought it was kind of comical that he's making roads on his property where he thinks it should be. Anyway, um...
Does that align with the other side of the road? I mean...
Yeah, it'll, it'll create a T intersection, because the way he's creating this S, it'll, S on the other side where we have that 90 degree angle. It's, it's exactly where we would tell him to put it, is what he's doing, because he understands what has to happen. I just thought it was kind of funny, he started moving weeds, make that happen.
So, it will be safer than what we have now, which is...
Absolutely.
...the horrible, dangerous death waiting to happen.
And so far, what I hear is that most owners are willing to cooperate on making that happen, too, because they can all see that in the long run, how having that intersection approved is going to make their property worth more money, and so that's why they're all excited about trying to help out whatever they can, so...
So, is the county kind of dragging their feet?
Not really, it's just I've learned, in the time being mayor, that they will tell you things, and then you've got to put a cattle prop to them to actually give them a follow-through on stuff, and so, that's where I'm at right now, is I'm in the cattle prop stage where I'm trying to push them along on that intersection and a few things.
Well, Margie wouldn't, yeah.
Sure.
On this 320 acres, that's, that's, you're changing the zones, you're, um...
Talking about changing the zones.
Yeah, oh, okay, right. So, how much of this 320 acres do, does the builder or developer have to keep, like, in, you know, for parks and different things?
Well, if we change it to half acre lots, it's just half acre lots.
It's only related to like a client development, that they have open space requirements.
When you get into a flat stage, that's where we can put the screws to them to say that, where's the park at again, Travis? And there actually is some appropriate area where there can be parks, and it's probably going to be aligned with also where there's a wash.
So, why are we doing this just as a flat zone change rather than a development agreement? I mean, this is a, this is a huge development and a huge impact on our community.
Well, we've got to have a zone change so we can do developer agreement, and, and that's what we're willing to do, and to develop the agreement on that, and that's where we'll, you know, that's where the turn lanes come in and all these other issues. Because the, the zone change, even like with the Gooseberry Mesa, we have a zone change up there, and now we're working on developer agreement, that's just the order of things.
Right now, we're just open space transition, there's nothing that they can do, so...
You still can't build anything without drawings and agreements and, you know, engineering and all that still has to come.
It does come as hurt.
Yeah, this has to be the first step to get to that point. And so, really, we're not needing to worry so much about all of the engineering stuff. What we're worrying about is the Planning Commission is what is our vision for the town, what's our general plan, and does this zone change align with what our general plan looks like? So, that's kind of what we're doing. Yes?
Rich Cough, 1193, used the opinion, can we like put a picture up on the screen so we can see where the parcel is with the landmark?
I guess the server's not working.
I was trying to, and when I was doing it, the server stopped, so...
This way, you could actually see.
Do you have this map, Richard?
No.
Well...
Well, he's wanting to see where this is.
Well, most of this right here is where that saddle is, back behind, you know, Main Street.
Dutton, Dutton Path, isn't it?
And all of this right here that's wide around it, that's all BLM land, and what we've been promised is trails all the way along this right here, that the town can still access with, you know, you know, something like a 20 foot wide, it'll be like a D9 kind of road, you know, not an improved road, but some kind of a, a byway where you can still hike back here and get to that area so it wouldn't lock it in. But this is, we're way back in there, if you know where the windmill is?
Yes.
Anybody know where that is?
Right windmill, I think.
I think the windmill's about right here.
Okay, so it surpasses the windmill.
Yeah, so it goes way past that.
Uh-huh.
Probably in here is where that old shack of a...
Yeah, right.
...house is or whatever back there, probably about here, so...
Right, I got you.
If that helps anybody, does that sound accurate?
So, is that, if that's putting right up against the cliffs, then the petal cliffs and that area?
Well, as close as the BLM property lets it, but, so there are some BLM between the cliffs and, and this property, and there's BLM right here. And then we'll have a trail system around all of this, as well behind all of this property, that allows us to have access still back there. That'll be in the developer agreement.
Yes.
And how many half acre lot houses are going to be built on this 320 acres approximately?
That sounds like 640 to me.
Well, they need roads.
Well, that's the roads.
Right.
But you'll put in as many as you can, I assume.
Well, they got to have roads, certain...
And there's, and there's washes, there's natural areas where you can build.
And washes and all kinds of things, that's going to be in the tree line.
So, this, this one part of the project is going to more than double the population of Apple Valley?
No.
Not that kind of demand in Apple Valley, sorry.
It's going to be more like Cedar Point.
It seemed like it was in the mid 300s, that's how I see it.
Rather large.
I think, it was around in the mid 300 ranges, what I remember seeing on a different map, was the number of lots. But these are phased in, this is probably a 15, 20 year build out, um, because when we actually get into developer phase of this, you'll take this, oh, she's got it up on the screen now, because that blue on the right won't be developed for some time, because you've got to have an exit, exit out of there, and even the stuff that will go on the left has to have a, a third exit out with some of that.
Well, they showed us last line making and where the exits are going to be. And this map here shows the number of lots, the streets, the cul-de-sacs, the park, so there's going to be a park in the area.
Well, see, that's my question, since I was shown this, when we went out and drove it, it's more than doubled in size. I mean, this was supposed to be, can I, may I...
Yeah, we've, we've added, uh...
This was supposed, this was what I thought we were talking about originally, and now when I come in tonight, I see this, so...
Yeah, you've added 160 acres, actually, or 120.
Well, below that, you know, we're...
120, yeah.
Looks like he's looking for zoning on... Looks like he's looking for zoning on a little bit more of that down below, but that's, that's still all in keeping with what we have up above. And none of that's going to be in the initial phase because all of that will have, you know, could eventually be built there, but it's, but we have exits out of that where that red is to the highway and then some of that has to be a third and fourth phase where we'll require additional streets to get through the highway or the main street, part allowing any building to go on in those spaces. So some of that stuff is future based.
But there are parks here and not all of them are half acre lots, some of them are acre and more.
Well, that was the plan we were shown, but now it's evolved into something else.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right Blake, this, this is what we're showing, I'm not sure if we're looking at the same map of Janet, but.
Yeah, I think it is.
I think mine's a little different than hers.
No, it is not.
Mine shows more roads than hers. But, but my point is, is yes, we've added a hundred and twenty acres to that phase one, phase one, phase two maybe, hard to say. It's getting to be a pretty good project. I haven't noticed that.
Yeah, there'll be a few phases. And again, we need to keep in mind that we're not doing the engineering for this, we are not even having to look to make sure they have road plans. What we're looking at is, does this zone change request coincide with our general plan?
I disagree a little bit. I know I've said this before, but right on the application, it says required considerations to approve a zone change. Number four is adequacy of facilities and services intended to serve the subject property, including but not limited road rights, parks, recreation, police, fire, school, storm, water, blah, blah, blah.
Except we're not the ones approving the zone change. We're forwarding it to the town council with a recommendation.
So they're going to do all that.
They are the ones who decide whether they approve it or not. So we, as the planning commission, we look at our plan and we look at their plans and if those things seem to match.
Oh, you also look at the plot before we approve it?
Yeah.
The plots come right back to you.
I guess I skipped a sentence here. When approving a zone change, the following factors should be considered by the planning commission and the town council.
But we don't really approve, so that's probably something that should be rewritten. We don't have the power to approve.
We're approving it to go to the town council.
We're sending it to the town council. So if you want to argue semantics, it's true.
It's not semantics, it's right there.
Except that should probably be changed because we don't approve, we don't have that power.
Well, it says that we're supposed to consider it.
Yeah, we can consider it.
Well, it's a big consideration and I don't know, I don't understand why we don't see where water's going, where roads are going.
Yeah, it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse.
But that's, we have to give them a zone change in order to see the plan.
Why does everybody keep saying that? Why do we have to do that?
Yeah, you can, you can, if you want to spend money to research it and plan it.
Now, I'm not saying I need to know what size the water pipes are or what size the water tank is, it'd be nice to know where the water tank is going.
Before anyone does any building, gets any permits or anything, that's going to have to come into play. What we're looking at right now is, is this the proper zoning for this area?
In the last meeting, we also looked at the preliminary drawings to determine.
Yeah, that's part of what we're proposing. I worry that's part of it, but you're supposed to do more. Good. I guess I lose that by the way.
Any other comments about the zoning?
I have a question about procedure. I mean, I know this is just approving or passing on the zone change, but when the plan comes through, does that come back to the planning commission or does that just get done in the back rooms?
Yeah, it comes back, it's as a developer grant and or at least a preliminary plat, depends on how it's done, but it all comes right back here. And then that, we'll have those engineering, a lot of the stuff answered that are being asked right now. The preliminary plat would be, would include a lot of that information. And then there's also approval of the final plat.
I just feel like we ought to see those kind of things before we approve a zone change.
It costs a lot of money.
We can't do a plat without a zone change though.
If you can't, it's a matter of saying where you're going to put the water tank.
If you have a preliminary plat approval, it says in there that we have, we can't do one because we don't have zone changes. So if you look at Mike Versmac's statement.
We're not looking for a preliminary plat, we're looking for a feasibility plan or whatever you call it.
That's what we presented so far. And that's what we looked at last week and, and actually, it's almost to a preliminary plat state with, with their engineer, Mike Versmac has already looked at this and says we can't go forward with this without a zone change.
And they've already presented and said that they will do everything they need to do to make it work? So the first step is.
And Blake missed our last meeting, by the way, that we did.
Let me say zone change.
So in your master plan, is this zone right?
Yes.
I didn't know what your master plan was. So you have a master plan correct?
Yes, we are, we are updating it, yeah, the general plan.
So this, this zone works for your master plan?
Yes.
That's right.
Can you get your name?
Kendra Webb.
Glad to meet you.
So that's up in this yellow area that is already zoned medium density, which we've said is half acre.
And since this dies go long, it's our.
So it's this area.
Can we ask what the balance of the parcel is planned for?
Are you talking about the by Main Street?
Yeah, the hundred and twenty acres that were not rezoning, yeah, I guess it'd be by Main Street.
Well, in your previous plan, it was outlined as commercial, is that what you still are looking to do there?
Maybe we'll work that out with Marty.
That's what I hear.
Hundred and twenty acres of commercial on Main Street? Nice.
Well, that's, right now though, it's zoned OST, so that would have to be run through things anyway, so.
It ain't going to be nothing if we don't get this part done.
Yeah, it isn't going to be anything. It can't be anti-growth.
So any other questions or comments about this parcel? All right, so if we close the hearing, do we need the whole rigamarole again?
No, let's just go, let's just do it by the parcel ID. Let's close the public hearing for parcel AB one through seven, two, seven, three hundred and twenty acres.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Second vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. I'm going to let you do this because you know the proper terminology, so. So we'll need to nip this one down. Okay. Yeah, we're going, yeah. I make a motion that we open the public hearing for zone change from OST slash OSC to RE one for AB dash thirteen twenty-six, AB dash thirteen forty-five, AB dash thirteen forty-eight dash A, AB dash thirteen forty-eight dash B, AB dash thirteen forty-nine, AB dash thirteen fifty-nine, it's part of the Redstone Development.
Second.
Okay, vote?
Aye.
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 I'd like to make a statement before I vote, just so everybody's clear on why I'm voting the way I'm voting, and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I'm going to make it anyways. I have been polling my neighbors and people who live along this area who are going to be impacted by it and most, everybody I've spoken to is against that kind of density, so I have to vote no.
For the.
Just open the hearing.
For which one?
We're just opening.
Sorry. Okay, yay, yay.
Okay, now we know where you're sitting.
We know where we're standing.
Are you talking about the?
The half acre.
Oh, okay.
The half.
Oh, the half acre that we just.
We voted on already.
Well, we just closed the hearing, we'll vote on it after we have all the hearings. So this is, this is opening the hearing for this.
You said opening the hearing.
Sorry, sorry.
On the paper.
So it's okay, now we're twenty-six.
Now Travis, these are going to be a lot of horses, Travis, these are going to be a lot of horse lots and it's like small ranches and stuff. And this is down the line, quite a bit down the line. Do you know that there are overflanked springs up in where you're putting this area?
I think it'll hack.
These are, these.
I was just saying.
And.
Are you going to dig the springs? There's just a lot of water up here, a lot of water.
Hearing open?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Rich Cough 1193, could we bring the parcel up on the map again so we can see it? Or is it not the same parcel?
It's not the same parcel, it's this blue.
No, no, all we opened was, oh, we opened.
Yeah, okay, right there.
So this was what we discussed before.
It's the part to the right?
It's the blue.
It's the blue.
Also, the first was just the red.
The red's a half acre and the blue's the acre plus.
That was my confusion, I thought we were voting on the half acre stuff before we went to the acre.
So it's the back section of the project for the most part, towards the east. Yes.
Right, okay.
Okay, so where is this on here now that we're having? I believe it's this area.
So we've opened the hearing on all of those parcels, is that correct? We did.
Yeah, I got that one, this is.
Some question. They would just rather see this all.
It's the only one I'm not seeing on the listing was.
I just feel like.
Thirteen forty-six?
Yes.
Because we have thirteen forty-six on the map, but I'm not seeing that in the list of the hearing.
Oh, me too.
Should it include? Where is the application? So, look at this, so. Thirteen. Yeah, thirteen forty-six is on the application. Okay, so it's just not on. It's just not, wasn't on our listing of the.
Then we better add that to our motion. Thirteen AB thirteen forty-six is on the ownership.
So AB thirteen forty-six also. So is it possible to amend the motion or?
Um, probably not right now because you have to, you have to notice it and it wasn't noticed as part of the parcel.
Even though it's on the zone change application.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's on the application, it just didn't get put on and we were reading from the, from the agenda.
Okay, well, let me check.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, left off.
Yeah.
It's called human error.
So any questions, comments about this? Yes.
How many acres is that?
That is.
I believe it's nine hundred and twenty, if I recall.
Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Thirteen hundred and fifty minus a bunch of this stuff. Let's kind of look at it.
It should be twelve forty minus the three twenty we just talked about, so that's nine hundred and twenty, but I don't know.
Well, I was going to, it was included in three twenty. As a, as a whole project.
Oh, well.
As a whole project, I was just saying around, probably around that.
Yeah, it's twelve forty with.
That's what we charged it for.
Well, you didn't charge enough because it's, it's twelve forty.
Well, it could be that.
Which, that's a lot of acreage.
Well, you have to have a lot of people interested before you'd have a lot of houses, so. So this does show up on our general plan?
Yes.
As being one acre?
Uh, no, not really.
And some point five and some.
Right. And I guess that brings up the point, why are we not needing to talk about changing the general plan? I'm not sure I understand.
Because you can see it's all, it's surrounded by the one acre and as Sean was saying before, when it meets kind of the spirit of the plan, that, that the bubble of what is fitting for the area.
Yeah, if you split it up the way we did here, yeah, it does, but if you put it all together like you should for the subdivision, then no, it does not meet a bubble standard.
Well, I disagree, but okay.
Well, if you look at the twelve hundred and forty acres, fifty-five percent of it is R medium.
Yeah.
Twenty-six percent is R one, you want to change to sixty-five percent R one and twenty-six percent R medium.
But I would think that, that R one is more desirable.
That's what I would think too, but that's not for us to think without having a public hearing, if you see what I'm saying.
That's what we're having now.
Not for, not for general plan amendment change.
For the general plan amendment, as per what Sean said, usually if you improve the, make it so it's, it'd be one thing if it was R one and we were making it point five. But he, when it's close like that and it's residential and it fits what we're wanting to do with our plan anyway, then it doesn't require a general plan amendment.
So you're going to take.
That's for our lawyer, I'm going to take our lawyer's word for this.
You're going to take a hundred and sixty acres of agriculture?
What are you looking at?
Open space transitional.
No, no, we're, open space transitional is the zoning, I'm talking about the general plan and we've got a hundred and sixty acres of agriculture on the general plan?
Yes.
Is that this, these last three parcels?
Last three right there, you, you got, so by splitting it off like this, we've totally changed all the calculations and that's probably not why Sean would say.
So you're, it's this bottom.
Right.
Quarter of purple here.
Right.
It's right across the street from point five. Density, medium density.
So it would be in, in the bubble.
Yes, it would.
Yeah, if you count the huge acreage across the street, but that's, I don't think that's what Sean's saying, but I guess we need Sean here to say that is just really egregious if you ask me to take a hundred and sixty acres of agriculture and just say, oh, well, the general plan was wrong on that, we'll just change it.
Well, it's right across the street from point five.
All right, that has absolutely.
And it's right adjacent to one point O. So it's, it's right there within the bubble of those.
But that big yellow you're pointing to isn't this gentleman's property, to my knowledge.
It doesn't matter, we're looking at the general plan here. The general, yeah, the general plan has this.
So I can just pick and choose what I want to look at at the general plan?
No, but the, what Sean, Forrest?
I'm sorry, but it's, you really need to get some, anyway. This is not correct.
When Sean was talking about the bubble of zoning, he was saying the property in our plan that is adjacent to.
For a certain parcel, not for a parcel plus whatever's next to it. If you see what I mean, if he's got a parcel and there's two general plan zones applied to that parcel, you can probably pick and choose, but you can't take that part. that parcel and say, oh, well, the parcel next to it is such and such, so we're okay. I don't think, no.
Remind me, the, the procedure for rezoning, I thought was if it doesn't agree with the general plan, first you change the general plan, you, you come to the council and say, hey, I'd like a general plan change.
And if it's a major change, then yes, but what Sean was telling us a month ago or so is that when the property in question is fitting to the surrounding area, we have some leeway with that.
And since we're having a pseudo point type project out there, I don't see where it's gonna be a problem, having one acre lots out there.
So that's, that's what I'm referring to.
You know, I think, I think our, our goal in the, in the general plan was to do business and then higher density and then lower density. So from that standpoint, it, it follows that.
Yes.
Goal.
It's this little section right here?
Yeah.
That's connected to.
Yeah, cause we've got, we've got the higher density next to the business and then we've got lower density beyond that. And from that standpoint, I think it kind of follows our plan.
Yes.
In a way.
Well, I, I submit it needs a public hearing, but that seems to be a minority defense.
So, forgive me, I did miss the last meeting. Is this our official general plan now?
No, this is the one that's, well, the official, yes, and.
Current.
Yes. It's not the new.
And what happened with the one that we worked on? Is anything, nothing's been done with that?
No, nothing's been.
He's still, in order to stop that, you have to do a public hearing, where you have to be known as the master of the project, so this is still the current general plan.
What do we have hanging on the wall? I, I don't quite get that. I mean, I'm fine with it, but we got to know what it is.
That's an old one?
That's just a bigger version of the old one. I, I blew it up so it's easier to read. But it's, uh, this was, um.
The colors are a little different.
We just spent a bunch of money with them sign doing, and it's the one that's online right now and it's our most current map that they've developed.
And what shows is fuchsia there is what's purple here.
Yeah, but if you look at the commercial, it's quite a bit different. Look at the, look at the.
This is what we pay them, uh, not positive, but somewhere between thirteen and seventeen thousand dollars over the last six months with, um, this is where Debbie Cobb and some of the other volunteers spent all this time going through every meeting since the beginning of creation to come up with the zoning and the general map based on meetings and changes and that's the finished product right now is what they're saying.
You're misstating it. We did the zoning, but we never did a general plan.
Well, this is based on what their understanding of what our general plan was.
Did we do a general plan?
That's based on all the information that we gave to Curtis, they inputted to make that.
So that's just a representation of how it's zoned currently. It's not, it's not our general plan map per se.
It's, uh, that's general plan map right there.
It, it's, I think it's both kind of worked in, right?
Well, that exact one's a printout of the general plan, but that's their understanding of what we currently have.
Are you saying that's online?
Uh-huh, yeah.
It looks right to me, it's just some of the colors are a little different.
Well, I, I would guess a cool look, cause I haven't, I've never seen it.
Yeah, you go on the new website and click on, you know, like building and you'll see some links right there to give you that. And you can take the general map and make a transparency, you can see underneath it as well. But, uh, according to them, that's where our current stuff is. We paid a lot of money to do it, so I'm, I'm making that assumption that it's right.
Well, I'm just saying it doesn't agree with this one and that was our, what I thought was official.
Some of the colors are different, but I think it's pretty close.
It's close.
Yeah, um, so any other comments about the, the blue areas?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Uh, I do have one more question, well, yeah, I do, if I can before we do it. Make sure we got the right one here, maybe thirteen forty eight A. Uh, general plan is a half, one acre and half commercial. I guess you're saying that it doesn't need an amendment because it, it fall under this bubble rule?
I, I think so, and not only that, but, um, the new general plan that we've started to look at, we've not, we weren't wanting commercial down this far anyway, correct?
Correct.
So, so I think it fits within the bubble idea and it also fits with our future hopes for
what our general plan would look like.
Unless you want commercial right down there in the middle of the one acre areas.
Well, I don't want any commercial, I'm just, I'm just saying it is general plan commercial.
No, I think since it's surrounded by residential, that, that I think making it residential is.
I don't, I don't agree with it ever. I haven't been on the general plan like that, but since it was, it, it seems to me like we need to have a meeting, change the general plan, but I guess I'm in a minority here, so.
All concern noted. All right, so we have a motion on the table.
Second.
Okay, vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then the last hearing?
I make a motion that we open a public hearing for zone change from OST slash OSC to RE one acre for AB one, three, nineteen A, miles mark subdivision.
A second?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so this one.
I have a question for you Travis. Why do you divide from this to twelve lots? Since you're gonna have another exit and a, um, another entrance.
That's what the fire marshal had recommended for a minute, so we reduced it down and then once they studied more and figured out the, the second exit, then we updated.
Okay. So not all these, but there are this project here and the one out there, view from my house.
I'd like to restate that differently. Franklin Hart said that if we put in twelve lots, that we didn't have to have a secondary exit and then Frank comes in and says, yeah, we do have to have it, and so if we gotta put in a secondary exit, uh, Michael has a thirty or whatever number of lots up there. His, uh, fire chief says he's okay with thirty up there if we have a second exit. And the last thing we, you know, we're looking at twelve because we're trying to avoid the second exit, what Frank said, and I guess Frank changed his mind and, you know, just making us jump through hoops.
Okay, it makes more sense having, cause that goes real low on the, uh, on the north side of that mesa. I see that out in my fourth story of my house, so I'll see all those homes, I'll see all the homes over in some some. But I went out to Coyanta for a hike the other day, can't see any of those homes.
You're gonna have to sell your home and move back in Redstone tomorrow.
No, I like my home, but I went out to Coyanta for a hike and you can't even tell there's homes out there. And I think this is kind of what you're going for here, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, so if it, you know, if we can still hike and you can't see the homes because they blend in and they're one story and, and like this.
Well, you'll see that stuff, that's, you know, the half acre.
We can't specify it, I mean, I guess we could end up.
Once you get past there, it's hard to see it.
You know, if we zone it and he wants to build thirty-five foot tall houses out there.
I might take people with her, you know, after being on this.
So right now this is, um, isn't this like sixty something acres?
Sixty six.
That's sixty eight, a half acre.
Sixty eight.
And right now you're planning twelve lots?
We're planning, we're back up to, well, originally it was thirty-three, but we're back up to twenty-nine.
Oh, okay.
Um, we're, we, uh, second access is gonna mention, what's that all about? I don't know anything about that.
We went over that all in the last meeting with you.
We did.
And so it's gonna be, you're gonna do what you have to do.
Yeah.
And again, that's up to when they get the flats and all of that, so at this point, we're just needing to.
Could you refresh my memory? What we went over? I don't recall that. I, I remember.
No, I gotta talk about them down the road. We get, we went over at the last meeting, we're gonna go over at some more in the, the plating right here, we're just, we're here for a zone change.
Okay.
In other words, we got, we've got a long ways to go before we approve this anyway, it's just a zone change to.
To start the process.
RE one, so. We spent the last meeting going over that stuff for a while. We all traveled long distance just to get here to make this stuff happen. I, yeah, I, we didn't make it by the property.
We have a question.
Yes.
I have a question. If anything that was gone over in the last meeting, this is a public hearing, doesn't the public have a right to know what was gone over in the last meeting?
You were here, honey.
I was here, but not everybody was here.
Well, I was here and I'm not real clear what's being discussed, whether we have second access, cause I think it was never clear. Then it had.
At the last meeting, it was just the general, um.
Consensus.
Just kind of laying out what the plan was and the checkoff list of everything that would have to be done before they could even start building up there.
I may even have a picture of them, it didn't show a second access then.
Yes.
Debbie Cobb, wasn't that the list that call was going over?
Yes.
With everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and when he got to that, he said they were gonna take a road from Rome Way out to Main Street.
So you'd have a second access? Yes.
Rich cop eleven ninety three's opinion, just to clarify, this is the project up near Chief Louis' house near the water tower?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
It's proposed project. Please say proposed. It is not a project.
And so on our general plan, this is already zoned, um, residential one acre. And that's what they're wanting, is residential one acre.
So it does go with our.
With our general plan?
Yeah.
Yes. So as far as the zone change goes, which is what we are discussing.
Um, if we're, we were at twelve and, um.
I'll go over that again for you.
Yeah, run that by me again, I'm, I guess.
Franklin Hart told us that if we had twelve lots, that we wouldn't have to have a secondary road. And that's before the meeting, he puts his boot on the fire chief's neck and says that, uh.
I seriously doubt that, but go ahead.
But that, she, his fire chief was on board and then two hours later, he's not on board, without the secondary exit. And so he said that, yeah, I'd prefer to have a secondary road and the engineer said that we can provide that off of Rome Way to Main Street. And so if we're gonna provide that anyway, after we were told we didn't have to have a secondary road with only twelve lots, why would we go ahead and put a secondary road there and only keep it at twelve lots if, if that's the holdup to do the twenty-nine lots, we might as well go back to twenty-nine lots? And that's, and that's where, where we're at, is trying to keep moving the goalposts on this, uh, uh, you know, project, it's, it's, it's crazy.
Yes, I'd rather Travis.
Move the, move the goalposts for him.
I'd rather Travis develop this thing, cause I know you're not gonna put three and four story houses up here.
Uh, Kendra, Canyon Properties, I just, I'm from out of town and I just wanted to be caught up on the Franklin Hart, is he in the planning committee? Does he, what's his authority to be able to say that?
He's the private rose.
He's the bishop.
None at all, and just curious to see if you're still involved.
The wind came out and he was trying to count, uh, how many houses between the nearest cutoff road. Said, one, two, three, four, we've got eighteen, so that means we can only develop twelve more to equal the thirty, which is a fire marshal thing. And, um, so he says, if you do twelve only, then you don't have to have that secondary road. So we cut it down to twelve and then he decides that, no, we need to have it.
But then I don't get that right there, fire marshal.
Well, but the fire chief then says, well, you'd rather have the secondary road.
So the fire marshal is.
And it's, it's getting, he gets pressure from him to, cause there's some gray area there that, you know, we have the ability to, you know, say yes or no to on some stuff.
Right.
But if we're gonna spend, you know, whatever amount of money he's gotta spend to take a road from.
Right.
Rome Way to Main Street. I will have twelve lots of.
It's the planning commission and the town council that actually be.
But not Franklin.
Not the Franklin Hart, I'm not just wondering if he's part of this, how part of this, this council, I didn't know.
So Frank's just one, one citizen vote.
Right, noise maker, yeah.
Yeah, he's a vote, he's by me, I oppose it.
Well, Frank has some, Frank has some unique qualifications though, I mean, he knows the law quite well, he works within it every day.
And that you know, is it, what Apple Valley, I'm, sorry, Sean Bennett, um, I'm a Realtor, I got clients out here and that's the question, you know, that, uh, people keep asking me. You know, I'm here to just, you know, get educated, so, um, some people think he has authority, some don't, so is he educated in, in Apple Valley stuff or is he educated on?
So Frank was working as a volunteer, as a community development manager, man or?
He is still playing now, he's a part of the volunteer planning committee?
No, no, he should be, somebody should be. We don't have, we don't have anybody doing that job.
Yes, we do.
But I have a lot of problems.
Mike Versmac.
Can we have one person at a time, please?
Frank stepped away from the position because it was involving church and state and he couldn't get mixed in with that anymore.
I just wanna know where it was.
How's that involving church and state?
Cause he's a bishop.
Cause he's the bishop, only because I had, um.
Who cares?
He, he got a lot of.
At one time I was.
He was getting a lot of.
Was volunteer for planning and I can be worried today.
Yes, yes, he, he did, he did, but he is no longer affiliated with.
He isn't acting as a bishop, he was giving us good advice.
So I just wanted to share what I think is a lot here.
Frank is not the bad guy, please write that down, thank you.
Okay, well. We, we do have a person who's helping with, with planning now that has experience with, yes, so.
Mike Versmac. And Mike Versmac reviewed all of this and, you know, it's, there's notes in that from the last meeting.
It's quite a bit different from the last meeting.
Well, whether we are talking twelve lots or twenty-nine, um, is kind of a moot point at this point because there are sixty-six acres, which means you could technically have with one acre, um, you could have more than twenty-nine.
And what it gives us still has to go back to Mike Versmac, when we get the final drawings of the former flat, all that can ask, go back to him for any notations and you guys get to look at it again, it's not like, we're gonna let him start building tomorrow.
So again, this is just discussion of a zone change from open space to residential one acre, which it shows as being on our town general plan already. Any, yes?
Kendra, Canyon Properties, I didn't even, when I got live here, I just wasn't sure who's, who's.
No, no, it's fine.
I've been here since, since, um, two thousand fifteen, I, there's been three mayors and I just haven't been trying to keep up. I'm like, who's, who's who now? I'm trying to make sure I'm.
Preaching to the choir.
Have the authority and that kind of thing, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, it's, it's fine, it's fine, it's been a little bit, a little bit crazy.
Okay. Make sure I know who's on board here.
Don't open that kind of door. All right, so, um, yes?
Rich cop eleven ninety three's big opinion.
If it's consistent with the general plan, seems that it should be pretty fundamental.
Seems, yeah.
That's the number one thing you need to look at, there's four others, three others, excuse me, I don't count very well, I'm upset. But I would guess we ought to look at it, so.
Any other questions or comments about?
I, I would, since you do have a master plan now, because when I started to go, did it, you have a master plan?
We, we did, we did.
A master plan basically is zoning that is in existence, it's not a master plan of your future, of what you really want for the town?
Yes, yes and no, our general plan is our, kind of our vision for the town.
Okay, that's everyone, that is your vision.
Yeah.
But it's not just your zoning that's existing.
That's a little tiny mat next to it.
Okay, and then with that in, in mind, it's still. Okay, and then with that in, in mind, it's still in progress. Is that correct or some changes waiting to happen?
I think it will always be in some kind of flux, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, it's not set in stone. And then on top of that, have you thought of the, the green belt with this town always having tons of flooding and, and green belts flowing into park areas and water and, you know, to have existing parks that the water flows into?
I'm for any of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's more of an engineering, but something to think about.
The, yeah, the, the more open space ecological improvement type things and...
Yeah, I mean, they're like parks, but yet when it does flood, it becomes the bowl of the water.
And we, and we do, we are working on, on some drainage things, yes.
And the, the second road coming off of Miles, uh, Miles Mark up on Mesa.
Yes.
Uh, if they do another road out to Main Street, that will quit the sheeting of the water coming down to Mount Zion Drive. And that would eliminate a lot of the flooding in that area. And that would be a big plus for us that live there.
Right, something to think about.
So there's a lot, there's a lot of pluses for all this.
I just wanted to get on board, 'cause I knew you had that as a big, big reference.
Get on my page.
Thank you, Kendra.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Uh, this, what's called secondary access that we can't discuss is, there's some way, uh, way to make that a primary access? I'm not sure I see that being a secondary access. And mostly people are gonna go down the other way, down Rome Avenue. Uh, and that is a lot of traffic on a really bad road.
Well, that's something to work out with the, with the plat and engineering and fire and all that, right?
It's, it's a, you know, kind of a horn sense too, because it's a public roadway. You can't tell them that, no, you guys have to go that way.
Yeah.
You can't use this other access and you're talking about setting them out three miles out of the way.
We can exactly do that, sir.
But for us, the road will need to be approved for this project.
Yes.
I know this has really nothing to do with it, but if you're saying that we can do that for us, why can't we up at Cedar Point tell the people of Towns Eye on the State you can't come through our entrance?
Poor Jerry East on this cabin project, using your turn, you know, your roundabout. You know, the, UDOT's already visited, so they cannot prevent you from not using it.
That stuff is already existing. There is no existing road between, uh, AV thirteen nineteen A and Rome Avenue. I don't, I don't know what you have people are saying here. You, you, if he was abutting Rome Avenue, that's one question. But to, to bring a new road down to use, uh, substandard existing road? I have a real problem with that. And I suspect I'm not alone. Although sometimes it feels like it, I have to admit.
Well, it may mean that the road gets approved for everybody, which would be a big help.
That won't happen without a zone change.
Without a zone change, it won't happen.
Right.
Yeah, but where the zone change, will it happen? I guess.
Well, before anything gets built, it would have to.
They get the plat map to us for us. This is why we have to do this zone change first.
And then they can do the plat map and then we'll have another hearing looking at the whole plan and then...
Well, it's a little bit, uh, trying to close the barn door after you, however that goes up.
Well, the barn door needs to get opened at some point.
It does have to be opened.
If you wanna close it, how, you, it's very hard to do.
I don't feel comfortable taking any kind of other farm metaphors in first.
I was raised over farm, so I can't remember that.
Neither was I.
I think there's a fire at Apple Valley Drive, 'cause then there's gonna be a second access for it. Could be an emergency access.
Hopefully it's primary access. We don't, we, we got a one-lane road up there.
It gets very bad and very frozen and a lot of people can't use it. So it needs to be improved. Do you wanna spend your money, do you wanna spend your money on the chief's money improving it? Or would you like these folks to...
Uh, I haven't heard these folks say they're gonna improve it yet, so that's...
They did at the last meeting.
Well, we just need to see if we can...
Not, not Rome Avenue, they didn't. I got to mend it.
All right, any other comments about the zone change from open space transition to, um, residential one acre? On, from Miles Mark?
Uh, I really, really prefer residential five acre, but that's...
Well, that's, uh, that's not on our general plan.
I understand that, you'd have to amend it.
So, I think the lots are gonna be closer to about two acres anyway, right?
Yeah.
So...
You know, some of them are ten acres.
Yeah, so, it'll, it'll be diverse. But we're just going with the one acre, 'cause that'll catch them all anyway, so. All right.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing from Miles Mark, except division.
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now the fun part. All right, so we thank, thank everyone for your input with the public hearing. And we get to discuss stuff. So I guess we can just start with the first one we talked about.
The three hundred and twenty acre, um, on our map, our planning map, is for high density. So I don't see any problem with...
Well, median density, yeah.
Median density.
But we've said that's about a half acre, so...
It'll look like Cedar Point and I think it'd be advice. It, it fits right in with that plan. Uh, if they're gonna put the parks in, like they say, there are a lot of washes up there, so we just want a places they won't be able to build. And if they're leaving, uh, paths, uh, trails for residents to use to get up to Button Pass and up to the petroglyphs. I'm really all, I'm, I'm in agreement with this plan.
And it's right there off of Main Street, too, so it would make sense that it would be a little bit higher density before then moving back to lower density.
Yeah.
And I would just reiterate that most residents that I've talked to think that half acre density is too dense. And I'm just reflecting the, from the people that I've spoken to.
You guys are all on the same page, aren't you?
Well, so many plus.
Oh, shoot, I just thought of another question. Too late, almost.
Well, we can discuss things. I mean, that's what the whole discussion...
Which one we're discussing?
We're discussing the, the half acre.
Oh, okay. I don't have a question on that.
But as a, to complete my thought, I'm sorry, I didn't complete my thought. But people that I have spoken with are not against one acre lots, so that's...
I'm gonna put you down as the...
Just on that.
Just on that one, okay.
So do we have any more discussion on this one? Or have we all kind of decided what we think is okay for this one?
I think we should give them a, a zone change. I'm really eager.
Well, that we would, that we would recommend...
Recommend that it goes to the city.
For approval? Okay, so yes, I would like...
Would you like me to remain a rule motion?
Yes, I would, I think, because no one else is saying they have any further discussion about it, so...
Okay, I'd like to make, um, a motion that the Redstone Development Zone Change from OST slash OSC to SF point zero, or zero point five, proportion partial of AV thirteen twenty-seven. And I'm just gonna use the three hundred and twenty acres. Can I do that, please, Michelle?
I think so.
As the parcel, the parcel ID, uh, I, I say that we allow the zone change. To residential.
Forward it.
Ch- change it, you have to say change the zone to half acre residential.
Yes, that's what I did say. I just didn't say all this, this stuff.
Say to forward it.
And that we forward it to the town.
To forward it. Can you say it?
Say it out loud.
Say that we recommend we forward it to the town council.
We're forwarding it to the town council.
For approval.
For approval.
I'm too shy.
I'm too shy.
He's a, he's a side seat motioner. All right, um, I second. Vote?
Aye.
No.
Aye? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Three. All right, and then the second section, all the blue stuff. That on the, we're just having a discussion about that right now, just to kind of, before we make our recommendations. And so, yeah, most of it is already on the map as, as, um, as residential one acre. But then there's some commercial and half acre that's, and some agriculture that's dotted throughout the area.
Yeah, there's agriculture across the street, um... All righty.
I feel like this one does fit our...
This does fit. And we have to add AV thirteen forty-six to this also?
Yes. 'Cause it's on the application.
Yes, and it wasn't included in the public...
Okay, good, yeah. So it was just an agenda item thing, so...
So are we discussing all of that?
Well, yeah, we're, we're discussing it, right? If you have anything to add to the discussion?
Uh, I meant to ask earlier, did we get input from anybody from these letters that supposedly went out on, on this particular group?
Mike, that sent a letter back in to the...
Right.
No.
Okay. Meant to ask that earlier, sorry.
So one thing I asked Michelle about, uh, earlier before the meeting started was how many people got noticed on this? And currently, our ordinance or state law requires that anybody within five hundred feet get a notice, which is like one property owner who's doing agricultural, I think. You know, my feeling is that this is a big project and it really does, it's gonna impact our community. And, uh, Michelle did clarify that notices were put at the mailboxes outside on our bulletin board. So people did have the opportunity to see it and to comment on it. And as you can see, that we're a pretty small group here tonight, so most people aren't really commenting on it. And, and I don't know, I mean, when I talk to people individually, that, you know, they get up in arms when you talk about half acre lots, but then they don't show up for the meetings. So I feel pretty conflicted, you know? I, I feel like I'm trying to represent the community's best interests and my neighbor's best interests and, and what they want, but then nobody shows up, so it's kind of, you know, it's a little frustrating. And I just wonder, is there some better way that we could reach out to our community and, and get more feedback? And, I mean, you know, last I checked, it was government buying for the people.
Well, sometimes people choose to not be involved.
We don't wanna increase the cost of stamps and paper and, and, and people know where things are posted. I think that we could make people more aware of the website, the agenda that's on their website, and then have it up to them if they wanna be here.
And, and that's not a reflection of this, on this project.
And they can subscribe to the, to the email list. They can subscribe to the Facebook page.
And YouTube is, YouTube now, too.
So, yeah, there's a lot of ways to find out. So, yes, likely more people should be involved. We'd kind of see a sense of apathy.
This is kind of how Apple Valley's always been.
Yeah.
I, I did it for fifteen years, so...
Maybe we'll get more involvement when it gets closer to being a, a project?
Maybe so. And, you know, we can get the word out to them, so...
'Cause I am disappointed, I'm not like, I'm disappointed, but...
But, because it is a big project.
It's a big project, but it's ten, it's up to twenty years.
Out.
So what's the rush to do this tonight?
Just, just, they can start.
Why would you call this a rush? You've been working this for over a year.
They have been, and David, very age...
I, I don't know what you mean by a year. I hadn't heard anything until about September, so I keep pretty good here on...
He started with Rick Moser and then with Roberts and...
And now with Martin.
On, on all of this?
Long before you were on the planning commission for us.
Yep, I was, I was meeting with him back when I was on the planning commission and...
Travis, when did you buy all this property? Do you know? I don't have it in two thousand and fifteen.
So any other discussion on the zone change application? All right, so I move that regarding the parcels AV thirteen twenty-six, AV thirteen forty-six, AV thirteen forty-five, AV thirteen forty-eight A, AV thirteen forty-eight B, AV thirteen forty-nine, and AV thirteen fifty-nine, that we forward, um, to the town council, our recommendation for approval for the zone change from OST, OSC to residential one acre.
Second.
Okay, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, and then the last one. So we can discuss questions or concerns, ideas about Miles Mark.
Uh, I did remember another question I had on that. Uh, Michelle, uh...
I, I read it on this, I read it off of the application, yeah.
Yeah, she got it. Uh, Michelle, did we send the envelopes to owners around Miles Mark, proposed Miles Mark?
Um, yes, I did send envelopes. I don't have the list with me, but I have a list in the office of who...
The, the thing I'm showing here is obsolete. I was just wondering if the other owners got notified, the new owners?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
The, the owners that show here, uh, that's not correct?
That show where?
On, on this sheet.
I guess he's talking about these people in the surrounding lots.
Jerry Snow?
They're obsolete.
That's obsolete, that's...
It's what the county records has, and so that's what they do, is they draw a circle five hundred feet around.
So I printed this just this week off of the county website.
I guarantee you, go, get on the county website, it's Steven Gubler.
Okay, well...
And I would like to notify Steven Gubler, but he's got to be...
We talked to Steven Gubler, actually.
I spoke to Steven Gubler earlier this week.
Uh-huh.
And so he asked, he had questions about the project and what was going on with it. So he's, he's in the know, he received a letter.
He did get it.
He did get it, that's, that's my question.
'Cause he does have property, but it's just not this property. It was down a little bit further, but it still was a...
It's the three properties here, the thirteen nineteen C, D, and B are all Steven Gubler.
But he was notified and he, it was discussed with him, so, okay. Any other...
Actually, he's been the owner for some six and a half years, it turns out, just...
You'll have to take that up with the county, so...
The county doesn't, doesn't file things they don't have, but it was just, just submitted evidently.
All right, so if there's no further on the zone change?
I'd like to make a motion that we forward this to the town council, zone change AV dash thirteen nineteen dash E and AV thirteen nine nineteen dash A from OST slash OSC to standard development, with town's recommendation on second exit for development.
Mine doesn't read that way, Janet. I don't know where you get that. You pulled up an old one, I think, somehow.
I pulled up an old one, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion that we forward, uh, this zone change to the town council from, for Miles Mark, zone change OST slash OSC to R one AV dash thirteen nineteen A. And we send it to town council for zone change to residential one.
All right.
Second.
Second, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye.
Aye.
All right. You're sounding like a horse over there.
Yep. Yep. About that much sense, too, believe me.
You do have horse sense. See, there you go with the farm metaphors again.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the farm thing.
So, the minutes from October 24th.
Hi, bro.
Did you look through?
I think I did, but...
From the 24th, you were.
October 24th.
On the last room?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, she seemed very...
It's good deal. We just had to change one thing on the minutes, right?
Yeah, I wasn't there.
Yeah, because, um, when it's showing as being excused, but then it shows her voting to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, yeah, that was good.
She sounded like a woman, I think, wouldn't she?
None of us did, she was.
That was the last one.
Oh, okay.
We know that she would have voted to adjourn, but...
Right.
Yeah, I think that's the only thing we saw that was...
Uh, we might make a minor correction if you want, there's a, a note here for Jessup Canyon, land of many nations, and I think that's what was actually said, but the proper term is Jepson Canyon.
Oh, that's true, it is Jepson.
Jepson.
So, Michelle got it right, but somebody else got it wrong. Uh, mine...
All right.
I have those, too.
That's why it takes several pairs of eyes.
Several pairs of eyes.
All right.
I can't even read my own writing.
All right, so I move that we approve the meeting minutes for October 24th, 2018.
Second.
Yes, with the changes noted.
Yes.
Okay, and vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. We have one more thing on the agenda, who wants to grab it first?
I'm making a motion, that we do.
Second, third, fourth.
Okay, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thanks for coming, everybody in the canyon.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Kennerwood.
Yes. Yeah, you're gonna have to remind me every time I live, cause I just get so hurt, cut the best stuff.
This is the 23rd?
Yes.
I'm gonna make those changes on there.
I think I, I did a Jepson, and then I tried to cross off that one.
Pushed up.